Okay, good evening everybody and welcome to the annual town council meeting. It is six P M so we'll make a start. What I will say as I'll just read out this fair statement with regarding the video, the meeting being recorded, this meeting has been recorded and will be uploaded to the Biddletown Council YouTube page. The aim is that decision making should be transparent and in the public domain, which will involve more of our community and local democracy. By being in this council chamber, you are consented to being recorded and for your image to be uploaded to YouTube. Images and sound may be used for training purposes. Any views expressed are the speaker's own and do not necessarily reflect the views of Biddletown Council. Please view the guidance on recording and public meetings policy if you require more information. And with that, we'll move on to the agenda. This town meeting is held annually and gives electors the opportunity to raise issues with the town council and other organisations within the town. Questions for the annual town meeting could have been submitted in two ways, by submitting a resolution to be discussed at the town meeting or by participating in the open forum and speaking at this town meeting. I think the protocol is at the appropriate time. If you do want to speak at this town meeting, you raise your hand just to notify here's chair and then we'll call you in turn. Thank you. The business to be trans- town meeting sets the following agenda. So the first thing we look at is the minutes of the last annual town meeting, which was held on Tuesday, twenty third of May, two thousand and twenty three. So for those who've got a meeting path, we'll go through present, in attendance, section one, apologies, section two, confirm the minutes of the previous annual town meeting held on the seventeenth of May, two thousand and twenty two. Item three, presentation of the annual report and achievements from two thousand and twenty two, twenty three, Chief Officer. I think I might hear it today. And item four, feedback from tea with the town council, which was held downstairs and any actions for the town council to take forward. And the meeting closed at six forty one P M. So for those who were present, if you accept that as a true record, could I have a proposal even? Councillor Jones, seconded by?
Councillor Harper.
Councillor Harper. Hold hands of those present. Anybody object? That's carried. Those are, those are my thoughts actually. Thank you very much. Now what I'd like to move to is the presentation of the annual report for two thousand and twenty three, two thousand and twenty four. This may well be a double act, but we'll see how we fit that into two. So I won't read it out completely, but I will try and pick out the edited highlights. At the start of two thousand and twenty three, twenty four, we welcomed seven new councillors to Biddletown Council. At the start of their term of office, we spent some time establishing priorities for the next five years, which is, which is normal for a new council term, and creating a new five year strategy, which is available to view online for at Biddletown Hall. The town council team is made up of ten members of staff who are supportive to deliver the town council's priorities by a wide range of local organisations, community groups and volunteers. In the year twenty three, twenty four, very busy year and a very successful year for Biddletown Council. The council received the Silver Award from the Royal Society for the Prevention of Accidents, known as Rosberg, demonstrating the council's commitment to excellent health and safety. The town council was also shortlisted in the infrastructure category for the Let's Celebrate Town Visa Awards. This was recognition of the hard work of the town council and its partners in improving services for the community. At the end of two thousand and twenty three, if you remember that the local planning authority asked the people of Biddles to vote in a referendum to adopt or not the Biddleth Neighbourhood Plan and Neighbourhood Development Order. These documents have been created by the community to ensure that where there is development, this is the right development in the right place. Following the yes votes for both documents, these documents now form part of the local planning policy. And this has to be acknowledged as a tremendous achievement for the working group and we have a commitment to continuously monitoring to the implementation of this plan. I'm pleased to say that the UK Shared Prosperity Funding has been granted to support the provision of events and improvements in the town centre. These activities should be delivered this year, the year twenty twenty four, twenty five. One of these activities will be the development of a town centre square, which we gained planning permission for this in twenty twenty three, which is scheduled to begin this summer. In two thousand and twenty two, Biddletown Council led a partnership that became known as Biddleth Works Together. This began as a, as a group of local organisations that were looking to coordinate events in relationship to the cost of living crisis and has become something which is much more important. Through two thousand and twenty three, twenty four, these services have continued to provide warm spaces and free food, most of which is funded by the town council, but also make a significant contribution towards tackling loneliness and social isolation, making vital connections to ensure services are delivered as efficiently as possible. This partnership has continued and provides an opportunity to share information and seek inspiration. Twenty three, twenty four, Biddletown Council continued to be a hub for community activity. Dougie Matt joined the town hall partnership in June twenty twenty three, offering support for patients, carers and family members who cannot get to the hospice. In January twenty four, we were delighted to welcome citizens and advice to the town hall. The team now use this as a base for drop ins, Biddleth appointments and case. This has made a fabulous addition to the range of organisations who now use the town hall to support our community. The town hall reception is a community help run with the aspiration of being able to deal with or signpost customers in relationship to a wide range of issues. Our environment and climate change working group complete consultation in relationship to local priorities. These will form part of the action plan that will guide the town council's environmental work. Some of these priorities are to create wildflower areas and parks, verges and hedgerows, encourage engagement of the local population's sustainable garden, lobbies for the installation of electric car charging points around the town. We have continued to plant trees and then twenty three, twenty four, planted around five hundred trees off Moreland Road on Biddle Valley Park. Continued to work with young people during two thousand and twenty three, twenty four. Each year we're invited to Woodhouse Academy to speak as part of the P S H E sessions. What's P S H E?
It's on social health and edu-
It's also for health and education. We have also attended school assemblies and continue to embrace work experience opportunities. We host the school learners forum at the town hall, a chance for young people to scrutinise the work of the town council and learn about our town. We're also pleased to attend the high school careers fair for the second time. We were delighted when our partners in the Fair Trade Team asked us to display some of the fabulous artwork from the schools. Biddletown Council hosted support for a wide number of events in the town hall and on the High Street. In two thousand and twenty three, hosted an energy savings event, which was very well attended, health and wellbeing drop ins, Volunteer Week Funding Fair, the Remembrance Parade and a classic vehicle show, which continues to grow and go on from strength to strength. Christmas lights switch on, festival launch date and many, many, many more. We are determined to preserve and enhance the current heritage fixtures of the town. In two thousand and twenty three, twenty four, we restored the platform edge of the Gill Oak to Smokey's Way site, the original site of the Biddleth Valley Railway Station in the town. We are proud to be partners in the Trent Valley Trust and are looking to enhance the source of the River Trent on Biddlethmoor as the year goes on and this project should build from strength to strength. In two thousand and twenty three, twenty four, we continue to support local businesses through business breakfast events with bespoke support to access local grant funding. We have provided advice and opportunities for local businesses to host events, note their activity. Our community cinema happens once a month and this has become a much loved date in the diary. Sessions support the town council's work in relation to dementia provision, providing free food, refreshments and a relaxed environment. There is an intermission and the lights are kept very well protected. And council raises money through council tax, which is classed, known as the precept, services provided and by accessing grants that are available from external funders. External funding was received in two thousand and twenty three, twenty four from the district council in relationship to provision of the market and for the Leuntsmen's scheme, the Morelands Park and shipboard for the restoration of the station platform in Gillahyth. The county council provision of support for the energy saving and groundwork to enable the completion of the neighbourhood plan and neighbourhood development order. All grants help to ensure that we complete projects within the town without having to increase the amounts of funds we progress through the council tax. As most of our way, each year the town council allocates seventy four thousand pounds to support groups within our community. Any of these groups are published on the Clubs, Groups and Societies booklet, which provides information about the different activities that you can get involved with. Each month we publish a guide to all activities that are taking place in the town hall and this is available to collect from reception. In addition, projects that we plan throughout the course of the year, we maintain a large burial site, two allotment sites and several areas of green space. We fund the ninety three bus service, which is recently an extended, which is offered by D and G. Timetable information is available downstairs at the hook. We are also responsible for the annual servicing of the three public flocks within the town. Where were those public flocks within the town?
St Lawrence's Church.
St Lawrence's Church.
Here.
Here.
And, and-
St George's.
No, it's, is it the Roaches now that?
Roach.
Yeah.
There was still room at the Roach.
I don't know who owns which.
At our burial grounds, eighty nine people were interned in two thousand and twenty three, twenty four, then we commenced work on the plans for a new garden of remembrance at Woodhouse Burial Ground. Our allotment sites continue to be full with around thirty people on the waiting list. Going to allotment holders met at the start of two thousand and twenty four to agree priorities for their development in twenty four, twenty five. And what I have to say at this stage is that with regards to the balance sheet and the income and expenditure accounts, the auditor is coming in this week and the document will be finalized once the accounts have been verified and signed off. So we'll have those two published and then these, this statement of the annual report will stop being a draft and for the proper document for issue. Okay, thank you very much on that. Do we have any questions on that?
A question, Mr Mayor, it's really a comment. This is the first time we've gone for the Rosberg. Due to the hard work of Sarah and her crew, we've got Silver Award. I would hope, Mr Mayor, through your stewardship and Mayor's, Sarah's continued work. Go for the Golden. But thank you for that.
I think as a point of technical information, isn't it down to the size of the organisation a little bit about the Golden Award or is it, it's, it's hard to get the Golden Award start off with, isn't it?
I think it's probably more challenging to get the Golden Award because those organisations that get it, so the likes of, you know, Gloriel, one of them, some of the, you know, some of the really big organisations that have health and safety departments.
You've got Ian Mark. Yes, well, yes.
But we'll, we'll do our best.
And, and us councillors, we're like the spanners. So we said, yes, we'll, we'll try. Now, the next part of the annual meeting is a presentation on town voluntary work, including feedback from other organisations celebrating anniversaries within the year. Do we have any other organisations celebrating anniversaries in the year?
There are a couple actually, and what I want to tell you just as part of that update is that the Biddleham Amateur Swimming Club and the Fire Service are both going to do little YouTube videos with us where we ask them some questions about their, their fifty years, they're both celebrating fifty years this year. So we'll have those on our YouTube channel in due course.
So what we'll do, we'll move on to presentations from the chairs of the four committees, which we have as standing committees within the town council. And to be absolutely fair, I will take them in alphabetical order. So first is finance and strategy, which is a short presentation by councillor Rogers.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Shall I stay seated?
Yes, that's absolutely fine by me.
All right, thank you. The Biddletown Council Finance and Strategy Committee, very busy year again, like it is every year. Biddletown Council supports many features of the town, building the bus up, maintenance of the toilet blocks, the visitor centre, burial grounds, allotments, for the ninety three bus, for Biddleton Blue, which obviously makes the town be beautiful, and the community cinema, and also green spaces around the town. The very vulnerable of the town, the Biddleth Works Together project, found a big difference through that project and people who attended are very much appreciative and that's going on again this year. There's a regeneration of the town centre, which I think you know about, which is coming forward, and a regeneration of several areas of the town and the paths. This one particularly aims at frontage of the town hall. We are keeping an eye on the energy costs of this building and can't give you a quick answer on that, but we need to look at that in the future because the energy costs are quite high, unfortunately. But saying that, this year we managed to keep preset down to a raise of two pound ninety nine per household in Biddle, which takes it from sixty three pound fifteen, sixty six pound fourteen. That's the Biddleth Town Council's section of the, of the precept, which equates to twenty five pence per week, which we do an awful lot with the twenty five pence per week, we're taking a lot on there. Think this town wouldn't operate the way it does without several people who don't really get a mention. They'd like to mention at this point in time, to be honest, and that's the town hall staff. Without them, this town and the town hall wouldn't run as smoothly as it does now. So I have put them in alphabetical order, so there's no favouritisms, but as soon as you walk through the front desk, the back room, there's always pleasant staff waiting for you. So you've got Ange, Jodie, Kelsey, Lizzie, Mark, Sarah and Sue, who would like to give a big thank you for them. I will go back to Sarah, having they were put in alphabetical order, obviously the driving force of this town and us. If you get it wrong, you know about it, get a phone call straight away. I'll be correcting, but you're right, not in a nasty way, just to say it should have been done another way, but I appreciate that, I appreciate that. Oh, thank you. But the people who don't get a mention, invite them to mention really, no matter where you go in this town hall, you'll find it's very clean, tidy and that's due to the caretakers. That's Dave, Matt and Mark, all supported by the finance committee. We pay their wages, much respected for all the work that they put into there. So there's ten members of staff, everything that goes on in the town. I know there's work being done, more work than on the visitor centres, that is growing from strength to strength. And the finance committee, very, very in depth committee, as you all know, but I thank you for the support you give me and the staff and the chair in that committee. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, thank you. Councillor Rogers, we move on to planning. Councillor Hawley.
Thank you. Right, the, the planning committees continue to comment and make recommendations to the S M D C planners on the local Biddleth plans. These recommendations have been agreed by S M D C, although there have been one or two exceptions. The main achievement for planning this year has been the acceptance by referendum of both the neighbourhood plan and the development order. The plan has put in place policies which new plans will have to adhere to. This is now a legal document which has to be followed by Staffordshire Moors District Council planners. Development order makes it easier for shop owners to update their shop fronts as long as they stay within the criteria of the order. We've also, prior to that, we had a neighbourhood plan working group, which actually did a lot of the work to actually get the neighbourhood plan together. That has now moved on, it has now become the neighbourhood plan implementation working group and that's going to monitor the plan, how it's being used with respect to protecting green spaces, how it's being used to address plans and especially how Staffordshire Moors District Council are implementing those policies. And so in terms of planning, it's pretty much a straight, this is what we do each year and nothing tends to change that much. As I say, we've got the neighbourhood plan, which has been actually a difference for us this year in the fact that we actually got it through at long last. It's been a long, hard job and I would say many thanks to Sarah for the amount of work that she's put in and getting it there, and also to the working group and the amount of work that they put in as well. So that is pretty much the end and it's also the end for me because I'm going to be standing down as Chair of Planning this year. So, but I'd like to thank everybody for the amount of work that they've done over the years for me. Thank you.
I was going to say something, but I feel councillor Jones might well be too, so.
Well, I, I thank you, Mr Mayor. I, I just wanted to say with gathering, I mean, the neighbourhood plan was adopted earlier this year, I don't want many people, and in fact, some people were sitting in this chamber and realised they were massive in that wood, but went on beyond getting that through. And it's been several years of graft and blood and sweat and tears, under Dave's stewardship and able and supported by Sarah, who's done, you know, over. I think it's real. But we, we, we don't appreciate just how much work was involved against it and it's been a massive bonus that we put forth, both to protect, but protect their planning mass and enable their planning mass. And I just wanted to publicly say thank you as a town hall and to Sarah for getting it through. It has been a massive task, more than many people realise. So thanks to you, David.
Yes, thank you and yes, you, you beat me to it and I respect that.
Well, that was a nice one.
That's very well said. Okay, moving on, we have councillor Hart and the Recreation and the Living.
Hi, good evening. My name's councillor Andrew Hart, the vice chair is councillor Parks, and I have a very, very professional committee that does a lot of great hard work and approaches it in a tremendous professional manner. The committee has oversight for the operational services provided by the town council, allotment sites, burial grounds, green spaces. We've met with the allotment holders and implemented a number of improvements. We've reviewed all burial paperwork and the policies. The committee feeds into the work of the lengthsman, which I can't emphasise is very, very important for Biddleth, providing an opportunity for councillors to highlight areas of the town that need some maintenance activity. We completed a site visit for the butterfly garden and identified a number of priorities. We've commenced work on a section of the Trent Valley Way from Biddlemoor to Nyperst Reservoir and have commissioned work on a new garden of remembrance at Woodhouse Burial Ground. And I must emphasise, a lot of visitors who come to the cemetery at Biddleth, they do think both sites are absolutely excellent and they're very well maintained. We've commissioned work for the new remembrance, garden remembrance at Biddleth Burial Ground, Woodhouse Burial Ground, and we've commenced with a new programme of memorial testing across the burial site. This committee oversends the work of the transport working group and I'm very, very proud of them for the work that they've done and the fundamental in enhancing the bus provision in the town and that makes a lot of people, it cuts down social isolation tremendously. And I don't think everybody realises how much social isolation, social isolation there is in the town, people who live on their own and that bus service is an absolute godsend. It's marvellous. I'd also like to thank the fantastic support of Sarah and her staff because we couldn't do all this without that support. And I thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any comments? No, excellent, thank you. And finally, we have councillor Smith, who chairs the town community.
And so, yeah, just as Chair of Town Communities Committee, I'd like to just give a brief statement as the activity is over the twelve months. For those not familiar with the committee's structure and responsibilities, Town and Community Committee responds to all matters relating to town centre management, regeneration, town assets such as the town hall visitor centre and of course public toilets, which are always a bit of a bone of contention when we talk about them, tourism, neighbourhood plan implementation, young people, heritage projects, ceremonial occasions and projects and events. I'm really proud of the work we've done this year on town and communities. It's been innovative, it's been really future focused and it's been really radical. We've had some great ideas come forward that have been taken forward by the committee and then the officers to put the work in to make it come to fruition. This year we are proud of conducting a research project for a library of things, which is one of the radical projects that aim to bring an exciting resource to Biddleth. Our Biddleth Works Together project, as others have mentioned, has been incredible, helping to break down those barriers and the cost of living crisis by providing food and warm spaces. What evolved from this was a network of community resource and it was a real testament to the networking and resilience of our town in pulling together to help people. We then began to widen the remit of that group as it became apparent that it also helped to address social isolation within the town and we continue to work with roots on this important provision going forward. And as part of the Biddleth Works Together group, we actually had a research project conducted by Jill Salt with her professional hat on, not councillor hat, in conjunction with Staffordshire University. And that project was completed directly with the people and organisations using the groups involved in the Biddleth Works Together. The report contained recommendations for future development of the scheme, considered by committee and hopes to be used as a template for other towns to set up similar community schemes, who have shown an interest in what we do and how we do it. We compiled and sold a Biddleth calendar in memory of one of our biggest photography contributors, Tony Lally, who sadly passed away. We considered crime prevention and CCTV requirements in the town and are working positively with police to work towards this. The committee revised the dementia action plan. We also conducted an over fifties feasibility study to ascertain the needs of this population of our town. Recommendations from that have been made for future priorities. Approval was also granted for a Friday night film club with funds from Midlands Film Hub. The first showing was the blockbuster Oppenheimer. Preparations are well underway for fiftieth anniversary events for the town council and we had several mayoral and other really successful events throughout the year. So really, really proud of the work we've done this year for Town and Community Committee. And again, as others have done, our thanks throughout to Sarah and the wider team, all the support.
As, as always concerned when we have younger chairs of committees, that you were going to bind over fifties unviable. To be honest, I'm very pleased that you didn't. We'll turn that over. Right, the next part of the agenda is an open forum to discuss the, any issues raised by any electorate who was present. We're all electors, which also includes the questions which come under the two categories we had either by submission or by participation at this section of the meeting, which is in a forum. Do we have any questions? Would you stand and introduce yourself if you don't mind please, sir? Is that okay?
Chairman, more a question and a proposal. Years ago, we had in the Morelands, we had an economic development rate. I'm not sure what it's been like years now, under the, under the system. But then again, whatever it's called, didn't seem to be working. Years ago, we had a cholera, a Scottish border, Greenwood's sunout and small supply mills. We had the selectors die, works, quite a bit of employment from the town. Recently, there's been a snow gear done by Sheffield Health and University, beheaded by Professor Stephen Fotherhill. And the conclusions here come to the statistics. And a six hundred thousand in cold field areas, that's one in six of working age adults out of work, become within that condition. Thing like this, they really pondering. You have a government miss in the state, they're really idle. So if you're in that wheel. And then I find out indeed, you have the border market, best market, Pickles and Oxford Church, and the Lion's there, seventeen million. That was never asked. That was never asked. You don't even go to believe it. Well, to my eyes, chairman, that's not leveling up. That's gruesome. Real leveling up would be to replace the jobs in Biddles and flush them. Chair, the Bowdeners, then, we have industrial sites. What's happening? Conway is a town, township, we comes in, prepared just to be a bedroom for the boys. And Bunglton, all we want.
I fully appreciate the sentiments of what you've said. And without getting too political on it, there has been, obviously, a lot of change over the past couple of decades. Industry has, generally speaking, we, we've moved as a country from a country which manufactures the country, which is, which is too reliant really on, on the service industry. Um, a couple of points which you raise, I, I would like to bring in one of my colleagues, who's really asking a question, which is under the remit more of of the Staffordshire moorlands and, and the county moorlands, Dan Council, so to speak. And councillor Garvey, I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but we have, as, the, the new, we've had a new administration at the Staffordshire moorlands, the same as the new council here. And one of the things which, which was recognised at the start is the need to start growing our economy and bringing wealth into it, because we, we do recognise the Staffordshire moorlands as an area which includes the town of Biddles. It's the one area where the population's declined, and at the same time as the population declined, the population's getting o- older. So that's an indication that the young people are start, are moving away. And, uh, my concern is, is that the three massive, for want of a better term, whether it's the right development, there's nothing, massive, uh, economic development and regeneration, certainly on, on the business and to a lesser extent in industry side, both in Congleton, uh, which is being supported by the extensive, uh, business, business sites along Viking Way going down towards the New Vicus. And there's still more development which is going on there, and substantial development in the Chappely Valley. And at Tunstall Arrow, uh, north and south, which is on, again, eight five three seven, the same dial. And what is important, which we all collect in council and Staffordshire moorlands, is that the Staffordshire moorlands isn't forgotten as the centre of business and economic activity, ideally based on some kind of added value manufacturing. We're privileged to have some very good new, relatively new manufacturers at the Victoria Business, Business Park, just where Victoria Colliery was. The old industries have, have gone and it's, it's very hard to see how they could, they could ever come back with the cost of investment for setting, setting them up. And then as a history, very much supported by the conversations we have at town, we are very, very much aware of the need to develop our business opportunities, our commercial opportunities, our potential industrial opportunities, and not just advocating elsewhere. I will bring in councillor Garvey, if that's okay, just to say something about the, the emphasis on the, on the growth and economy final, which has been central at the, so, there, there's, yes, and we've got councillor Ward, who I'm sure has got a comment. Can I bring in councillor Garvey first, if I don't mind, just to, just to, just to emphasise the fact that it is something which is recognised as Staffordshire moorlands and Biddles. Biddles plays a central part. Then I'll bring in, uh, who's his?
Yeah, of course, okay. Thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, I can just provide a little bit of information on this in that as part of the new administration of Staffordshire moorlands District Council, a new committee was established, a growth, the growth and economy committee, which is actually looking forward to understand what the issues are rather than simply take anecdotal evidence, to actually understand what the facts of the situation are. And from that information to form a, inform the growth strategy to be developed by the District Council. The focusing on the areas of transport, because without appropriate public transport, people can't move around the district and that limits people's mobility for, um, employment. And even affordable housing to attract the younger people back into the district. We have a, um, effectively a net migration out of the district by the young and middle population. They'll go away to university and never come back to the district because there aren't the opportunities, as you quite rightly point out, to bring them back. And if there were the opportunities, there isn't appropriate housing for them to purchase and therefore, again, it's a, a, a barrier to bringing people back, who will be the, uh, employed in the next generation. Um. There are a number of initiatives being approached at the moment, but as I say, the key one is the development of a growth strategy for the district. Focusing upon the very different needs of the different town. You know, it's a historically been an exception of one size fits all, it's quite clear from our analysis of the different areas of the district. So that's, it's currently in the table that the needs of Biddles are the difference of needs of leap and the needs of children. So it's, at the moment in time, it's about understanding where we are and what we can do to work with the, uh, higher tiers of government, higher tiers of local government. At the county, you're involved with the transport and education, but also those we think you can do enough within our own purview in the district are developing business opportunities, making appropriate land available for, uh, businesses to move into the district. I think at this point, that's probably all I can say, because it is very much of a development process.
And the dynamic development process, I will say, is something which, which is absolutely recognised and it, it fits very much with, with your statements, was, was really a briefing to that committee when it was being, when it was being formed, you know, it's, it's something which is recognised and your comments absolutely exemplify that. Councillor.
Yeah, I was just going to say that I think it's one of my biggest frustrations as a, as a parent of younger children that are now just about to embark on their adult life. I've got a seventeen year old. There is no employment opportunities in this town for myself. He will have to go into the city or he will have to go through the field. There's, there's barely any employment. And I think what citizens of this town need to be aware of is that if we want to bring employment into this town, then we're going to free up land. Some of that land will have to contain things like warehouses and, and wind, uh, buildings that we might, might not look very physically attractive. But if we want to provide employment in our town, that's something that we need to look at. And certainly, that committee, yeah, somebody's here looking to, as councillor Garvey, right, they said, free up in that land, build those kind of industrial units. And transport's vital because currently, uh, students can't get to colleges easily. And, and we don't want parents having to take, take apologies further afield. But that is something, I think, if we bring this back to the town council, which is why it's come, then that is something that the town council, the town council, the town council's got this transport win. We've been there once, bought nine to three bus back and we're lobbying county councils and actually everybody's, we're seeing this right in people. I think when the love bits that you spoke about and, and leap having a line share and cheedle, incredibly frustrating with the district council about that and the administration that was responsible for that didn't put a bid in, in the Biddles to the love funding. It's not that Biddles were forgotten by the governance. It was the fact that we didn't, the district council, the previous district council didn't put a bid in for Biddles. And, and that is an absolute crying shame that Biddles missed out on that money. However, what I will say is the UK, UK Shared Prosperity Fund has seen the ones come to Biddles in the range, and I'm going to stick a figure on it. I would say that Biddles, um, amongst the community organisations and the town councils that suffer, it will see in, in the next couple of months in the range of two hundred and thirty thousand pounds invested in the town for various projects. And that's really good to see. It's not the millions that leap, because that's by any stretch of the imagination. But, uh, we are looking to use that money, so for example, opening up the town square will mean that we can have bigger markets in there, which might have smaller sized companies. Um, so, you know, it will help the local companies. And so we've got to support projects that will see that UK Shared Prosperity Fund, uh, exporting to the town, but you're absolutely right. And as a parent and a councillor, it's really, really frustrating, uh, seeing the industry's just gone and it, it just seems to play big place where people come to lay their head at night and, and it can't be like that for a long future for our next generation. So thanks for bringing these points. And then that all councils around me would have to get the industry back in town.
Just one pointed in, sir, I actually work with Steve Fodgill, he's, he's on a committee with me. Dental advisor for that, he's an absolute gruff chap. Uh, and I've actually got that booklet which you referred me to, I had it, uh, had it sent to me a couple of weeks ago, State of the Forests, and it is quite damning reading to be performed, quite damning reading.
Chairman, she's going around the coast of our skin. I'm trying to grant something on these. I'm glad to be a next guest. Or someone in university.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, following on from councillor Salt, the, the levelling up fund, which was obviously settled through Michael Go, as John alluded to, uh, and Boris Johnson, it was not, it was a fund in name only, it never actually did level up. And, and traditional industries, you know, in the north east and the Midlands, mining industry, the pottery industry, steel industry. On the TV this morning, Port Talbot's under massive threat of closure now, two and a half thousand jobs going to go in that net. We've got to start thinking outside the box and I think, you know, we, we've got a quite dynamic growth and economy committee at the, uh, Staffordshire moorlands, and it might sound a bit dramatic, but we've, we've got to start thinking in alternative ways of employment in, in the whole area of North Staffordshire. Because at the moment, you know, my view, we've become a warehouse because we do, all we do is restore things because we've got the, the, the local road network. We don't manufacture anything. Now, you know, how we change that dynamic, you know, it's difficult. You know, and it's central government who will have to drive that agenda, but certainly from our point of view, you know, yes, Biddles weren't included in the bid, as Jill's alluded to, which was a disgrace really, because we should have had projects on the shelf, ready to go when that, that money become available, and we didn't. We went for leak, which, you know, I'm not, not declining leak their success and the seventeen million bid they got there for the three projects. But we weren't even, we weren't in the game, we weren't even on the table to, to access any bids. Uh, and cheedle, unfortunately, their bid failed as well. So there, there are a lot of things that are going on and Jill's, you know, mentioned the shared prosperity fund. Yes, we can use that, but that's all government funding coming towards, you know, because of the decline in the areas. But the levelling up fund just isn't what it's, you know, what it says on the tin. It's, it's not a levelling up fund, it's, it's a vanity project for a lot of areas. And, and we certainly missed out on that because of the inability, and I'm slightly political, the inability of the previous administration to actually put proactive bids in on our behalf, and they should have done that. Now, that won't happen again, you know, and, and I think we've got a quite vocal voice on the district council of different political persuasions who, you know, are backing Biddles' corner. Uh, and that's what we should be doing, and that's why we elected as town councils and district councils to put that argument forward. But how we regenerate, you know, employment, we, we've got to start looking at different ways of doing it because we certainly can't go back to the traditional ways. My dad was a miner, my granddad was a miner, I went into the mines, you know, that was the tradition, what happened. But that, that isn't available anymore. So we've got to start thinking outside the box and I think, you know, we're making good inroads at the district council. But again, without the support of national government and the funding that comes from national government, then sometimes you feel like you're just banging your head against a brick wall. But I agree, you know, it, it, it's shocking. We've got our children who are coming through college and universities and having to move out the area to get good quality, well-paid jobs. Because we haven't got that at the moment, but, you know, fingers crossed, general elections will meet.
Oh, no.
Who knows? No, no, I'm not, I'm just, I'm just saying, the, 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 there's potential, you know, there could be, you know, a surge.
But just, just to finish off, a point of information on, on levelling up, because levelling up was a government initiative to replace EU funding. Now, EU funding basically went through areas of greatest deprivation, greatest need. So for example, you know, thinking outside the area Cornwall got, Cornwall got a massive amount because obviously the decimation of the, uh, and then copper, copper mining industry and all the, uh, and industrial issues as, as a legacy of that. The big difference is, as briefed by Steve Fodgill and others, is that EU funding was over seven years. So we didn't have to have anything ready. It went through areas of deprivation. It was an allocated fund based on a formula, and you had time to consider what money you had, plan, put it into work, deliver and reap the benefits of it. And as you go around the country, which is benefiting from those grants, you know, around Falmouth, around Redruth and places like that, never mind places in the north east and else around the country, fantastic. Levelling up isn't, is within the parliamentary cycle, not this seven year cycle, which is par- parliamentary cycles. So they had to decide to do it, takes up some time. They then decide what the funding is and get the money off the treasury, takes up some time. So when levelling up comes out, the three year project, there was a delay of nine months, which made it two year and three month project. Thirty-seven years of the EU fund. So what happened is that the only projects they could deliver is what they happened to find. Which isn't really structural. So that's one of the reasons why I leaked on it, because we happened to find something to do that. But it is a, a structural fault that they haven't really got around. They'll sort it out, you know, there, there's a lot of lobbying about more long-term funding, you know, which hasn't got severe deadlines on the political cycle, but that, that will take time. But Steve Fodgill, a very, very interesting, very knowledgeable man. And to finish off, councillor Jackson, please.
Uh, thank you, Mr Mayor. And John, you're more than well aware of the beauty contests that councils have to go through to get government funding. It's happened through the seventies, through the eighties, it's a way for them to go. Levelling up funding, as, as the mayor just said, is basically a couple of two and a half years. And let's forget something open already, span now. Many councils are going to give back millions and millions of pounds back to government because of the way it's been set up, it was set to fail. Now, I think the point of levelling up as far as this council is concerned, is we didn't get an invite to the part of the it was done and dusted before, you know, it really, the light really shone on it. And believing nobody, or, or everybody on this council was disappointed with the way that it was handled. Uh, I'll just, just quickly, look at some of the Victoria centre, talking about the jobs, the Victoria Business Park. If you compare the Victoria Business Park with the Cowshaw Walker Business Park, the density of businesses on the Cowshaw Walker side is much greater than on the Victoria Colliery side. The Victoria Colliery side, for me, is about thirty or forty percent underdeveloped. Too much land was given to companies that are just lying empty now and fenced off. Companies may have bought, got this land, we want to expand one to expand. Ratty Scan has actually been a, you know, a really good business up there and expanded. But they, they're using the land more or less, apart from perhaps one site that they've got more or less really well. For a lot of the businesses that were, got far too much land, and unfortunately, without a doubt, Staffordshire moorland District Council made mistakes and they parted off those lands and sold that land. Uh, so I want to just say thanks for your question, John, for anybody who doesn't know, councillor, eh, John, the councillor on here for many, many years, and the sparring sponsor for grabbing me into it, so, John. But that's your question.
And finish off on this, councillor Hall.
Thank you, Chair. To me, the problem is that the previous administration have been in authority for far too long. Uh, and now this, um, things were allowed to stagnate and we were ignored quite frankly. I think it's generally accepted, but it has been ignored by me. Uh, and I, and I hope and I pray that this new administration will, will perform a damn sight better because I think they've got wind in the sails and the best of luck to them. I wish them all the very best, Mr Councillor. Thank you.
Great. And moving on, do we have any submitted, uh, resolutions to be discussed at the, yeah? This forum?
Yeah.
I believe we have one, don't we, which is a, a three-part submission.
Yeah, so we've been, um, contacted by, um, uh, residents of the new buildings area. Um, and they didn't want to attend today, they're concerned about being identified. Um, they raised three issues. The first is that they used to have a street name, um, and sign. Um, we had one years ago on the patch of grass as you went it. It was knocked down possibly fifteen years ago and never replaced. Can we have a road signed back? We were told we could, uh, we could have one but have heard nothing. The second point there is they have issues with the five-bed HMO, House of Multiple Occupation. It's been allowed for released prisoners. Um, they, uh, claim they've got police there every other day, people running around outside with knives, residents scared to leave their properties. Um, and are hoping to sell but are finding that difficult. And are hoping to sell, but are finding that difficult. And there is nothing in the area for them to do, so instead they cause trouble, one being arrested and back in prison, we have no idea the name of the management company of the HMO. We're at our wit's end. The third part of the question was the residents of new buildings feel like the council don't no longer care. We used to have a road sign, a grit bin to use when the weather was getting icy. And we had planters with lovely flowers on the railings. We now have nothing, just ex prisoners in an HMO causing health. Ling's Car Wash who look after nothing, leaving rubbish around, causing issues along the path to the roads due to all the chemicals. Residents would love our council to help in a second. As it will only get worse if we get no help. More people will leave, people get a reputation, become a trouble area. So that was submitted by Ewan.
Yes, I think British response has been pretty similar to my response.
Yeah, I was contacted by a resident. I'll have to declare, my granddaughter lives in the Royal Palace, it's there. And I was contacted in terms of, you know, they'd heard rumours that this house was going to be converted into HMO. What was disappointing, there's nothing, there was no consultation whatsoever with any of the residents. But the legislation didn't need to, apparently. I took it up with the legal department at the S M D C, I took it up with housing specialists, and there's absolutely nothing the residents can do to stop houses of multiple occupation being put in any premises as long as they meet within the guidance of HMOs, you know, health and safety and stuff. So it's really disappointing that none of the residents have consulted. And there's absolutely nothing for someone to open up a property like that and turn it into a residence for ex offenders or whatever. It can be a multitude of things, but HMOs can be. So it's really disappointing and you just feel as if your hands are tied by the legislation. Because whoever the developer, who set up the HMO is acting within the law. But the law doesn't detect the residents. And it's disappointing. And I took it up at the highest level and there was absolutely nothing we could do to assist those residents. And I mean, they knew it was coming. I mean, the problems are there now, but they knew. You know, they were unsure at first what the HMO was going to be for. They didn't know if it was going to be a refuge, you know, or whatever. And of course, it's probably turned into the worst nightmare now. With, you know, grid, there's issues on a regular basis with police attending and it's not pleasant. It isn't pleasant for them at all. But, you know, it's the legislation just doesn't assist residents and that being imposed on them.
Councillor Jones.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yeah, I'm absolutely aghast of this. I was going to say before I started speaking. I thought we had to find them. And I'm just going to achieve, loving. I think that was the best. I mean, a road sign, people think that, people get a grip, that's not a problem. Seems to me what I was just saying, you know, it's a hand to tap. I'm just like, you know, maybe that's a, maybe we can write to the MP or something, whether that may be, we'll wait on this year. And maybe see if they're going to be able to say some chance. It seemed outrageous to me. This converter, you know, three, four billion dollars into an HMO. Without any buyer, we have something that probably zooming up fire and all that sort of stuff. But there's no need for us, no other residents to do that to anyone. And that is absolutely outrageous.
Yeah, you don't need planning permission for so many conversions of a HMO. And I think the limit is five, will cast. That's the shocking thing, that's right. Councillor Redford.
Yeah. This is obviously becoming an increasing problem throughout the Mollins effect throughout the country with these HMOs. I've had some experience of dealing with some of these in the past. And because it's classified as a change of use rather than a new development or anything like that, there is very little you can do about it. You can make a comment, I believe, at some page of the process, but your comment doesn't carry any weight or so, it's just a thing. Couple of the other points. I believe the planters were installed there by a former councillor, Nick Acier. This is Nick Acier. And I think she got some funding from an organisation she was a member of. And I think they, I think she provided perhaps the new flowers every year, but I think the original. And I don't know what sort of state they're in these days, but perhaps that's something we might ask Biddleford and Bloom if they would be interested in having a look at and perhaps either enhancing or bringing back into use. Because they do do the parks all around that area. And without throwing too much of a connection, we are a major funder of their organisations, so it would be quite nice if we could address them about that. It shouldn't be any difficult to get in a road star. That's S M D C, wasn't it, two times, we probably would have put the first officer from the district council. The grit bin might be more of a, I think the grit bin's not started.
There's ways around certain things, you see, well, two of those things are S M D C and one is County. But the reality of it is, is that collectively as a town council, we don't want any part of our town collectively feel neglected or forgotten or dismissed, whether we be down Whitehall, new buildings, Biddleford Park, Rock End, Mauckock. We have jurisdiction over part of Mauckock as well, and I assume we're allowed to have a trundle around there to make sure I'm on top of the pot, if nothing else. So we'll see that, yeah. And soon we can take these, we can take these forward with a little bit of pressure and umph to get them signed off. And councillor Salt.
Don't know if we can do this, but given that the person's absence, I propose, can we promote, propose on this committee? Yeah. We make a proposal. I propose that we ask the chief officer to write to the residents just to explain the process that's going to take. So I think we should refer the, so to explain to the resident that we'll refer the gritting situation to London and see if we can do anything. And if not, it might be something that the landlords can sort out if we can't get a grip in. That we refer the signpost issue to the district councillor for that area, which is councillor Church, civil rights councillor Church, and ask him to take on the signpost situation. And we can also suggest that the residents talk to Biddleford and Bloom, because I know that Biddleford and Bloom have publicised the fact that they're asking residents to take on pieces of land to help them because whilst we might financially support Biddleford and Bloom, the biggest issue that Biddleford and Bloom has got is the amount of volunteers to maintain areas of the town. So it might be that we empower the residents there to work in partnership with Biddleford and Bloom to maintain and hold to any flowers that are put there. Because I don't think Bloom can physically, with the manpower and women power that they've currently got, take on much more. And if they're in little baskets, they're going to need watering every night and that needs to be a resident's job, I think, really, rather than a Biddleford and Bloom job. So maybe we empower them to work in partnership with Biddleford and Bloom. So that's the things that we can do. Regarding the HMO, as councillor Jones has rightly said, we should write to the MP and put their concerns about the HMO to the MP. And also write to the commissioner of the police force as well, just, or maybe our local sergeant to just reassure the residents, you know, kind of few doors up there. I think those are the things that I suggest we did in their absence.
I'll say no, that's that. Yep. I think we've all been, please let councillor feel it without great environmental health involved, those in terms of the and potentially the community safety officer, David Smith, we can get in. With regards to the management of the HMO, because it might be a case of the housing team can do inspections. I don't know. I can guarantee that that's something we may be able to do in the circumstances. Before we vote on it, let's see if anything else happened. But in principle, I think I'll go to councillor Hall and then councillor Hall.
Yeah, unfortunately, on BBC News recently, Liverpool City Council is having a problem. They have a lot of HMOs within the city, used for various different purposes. And one of their problems they're finding is fly tipping. Old fridges and equipment being thrown out. And it's unfortunate. I think some of the cities are having a similar problem. And it's costing them a fortune to get cleared up. So as long as we haven't got that problem, then we'll deal with the problems that we've got. But it's quite correct, there's nothing you can do planning wise about HMOs. It would need a government change in legislation. Well and truly.
Councillor Hall.
Yeah. Something at the back of my mind, the word break, that springs to mind, but a blight notice when places are being developed, et cetera. But it would cause a blight on neighbouring properties. Could this be explored?
I think that's my sort of feeling to actually have a discussion with the community office, the community safety office. See what interventions we can.
With that, I'm arguing with you because we know each other.
Yeah.
The blight notice is all about where the other residents can turn around to the local council and say, come on, reduce our rates, reduce this and reduce that, because you're making us live in a pigsty because developments.
I think it's one to look into, isn't it?
Yeah, we can look into that.
Councillor Smith.
Councillor Smith.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, you know, the reason that HMOs are a profitable business model for private companies is because we have not built any social housing. You know, it's going to continue, this same situation is going to continue on a rolling model for the next ten years. There's going to be more and more HMOs, it's going to keep coming up. And unless we know, we lobby and lobby for them to build more social housing, and that's something that we do have the ability to do. And that's, again, something that we can stress that the alternative is really good quality social housing. And, you know, they can't make that amount of profit on a private company if there's no appetite for it because there's nothing as an alternative.
Yeah, it's very valuable. We had a proposer. Councillor Salt, we had a second from councillor Jones. Can we have a show of that, to take that action forward? Harry, thank you very much. That concludes the meeting of the panel of town.